My name's Marty Aitkins, I'm the Chairman, Vice Chairman, Mr. Kavais. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel. Did I miss anyone? No.
Right.
Oh yeah, Mr. Frank, Mr. Frankles here. And he won't be sitting on the first case. If I could, could I have a... Kavais, could I have a motion to waive the reading of 327-21?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I could have it to 23rd.
That's what it was, 23rd, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading in a minute for the March 23rd meeting.
Second. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so move. Before the board tonight. On the new business, we have no old business, case number ZBA 2084. Herbert Whistle for a variance to renovate and expand a single-family home and construct a loft area with a kitchenette and bath to the detached garage in 11 Bayberry Road in Quincy, is the applicant there representative here? Who's speaking? Peter?
Yep, here.
You have the floor, why don't you explain what you want to do?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would it be okay if I shared my screen?
Yep.
Awesome, alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and share.
Yeah, you're up.
I just have to wait to be allowed to do so. May I ask the host to enable me to share my screen?
He did. Should be on. No? What just happened here? Okay, should be all set, try that.
Trying to... Yeah, I'm clicking Share Screen right now, it's not letting me.
We'll get there, hold on a second.
No problem.
You gotta click it, dude. Yes, please. No, no, it's just yes, please, you can just... Gotta get a few things right here, we'll get it. What happens when you do it once every two weeks?
There we go, okay, we're in business.
There you go.
Alright, I'm bringing it up right now, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name's Peter Bartash, I'm here representing the applicant Herbert Whistle regarding the single-family renovation and addition at 11 Bayberry Road in Quincy, Mass. The main highlights here, it's an existing single-family home with a standalone garage. This is a resident who's desiring to create his forever home at the property. We're proposing to expand the existing house footprint and modify the roofline of the existing house. We are proposing to renovate the garage. We intend to maintain the existing coastal New England design aesthetic of the primary home. And we also intend to align with an appropriate scale for this neighborhood. What we're gonna do tonight is just run through quickly a summary of the variances that we are requesting from the board, as well as an overview of the project. And we're happy to answer any questions that come up along the way. So, here what we're looking at is just a summary of the conditions that are either pre-existing and non-conforming, and then the conditions that we're actually seeking a variance for. Specifically, I'll call your attention to seeking a variance for maximum building height in this zone. What's required is, or allowed is the 2.5 height in stories, and we are asking for three stories here. To be clear with that, we are not proposing to increase the existing height of the roofline at the single-family house. What we are proposing is to change the roof.
Get a full dormer, correct?
Right, and we'll look at that in a second. We're also asking for relief from the rear yard setback, as well as the extension to the home is toward the rear of the property lot itself. Here we're looking at a context aerial, just showing that the home in its context. It's highlighted by this red circle in the middle of your screen, and you can see it's sitting right along Bayberry, Bayberry Road here, close to the intersection with Bellevue Road. Again, there again, when I'm speaking of the single-family home, I'm speaking of the primary structure on the lot here itself. The existing standalone garage is closer to the street, right at the left-hand side of the lot here. Here's some street views, showing that existing structure and the existing garage itself. And here's the proposed site plan, so for this case, it's been reoriented, Bayberry Road is up at the top of your screen here. You can see that the proposed area of the new addition is to the rear of the house. Step back 14 feet from the rear property line here, along the southwest. And then the existing garage footprint is shown, is in this sort of dashed underlay here. This shaded area is the area of the new garage footprint. You can see we're maintaining the existing garage footprint as it relates to the lot lines here, and proposing to expand it to the rear inside, internal to the actual parcel itself. So we're gonna first just roll through the plans for the main, main, single-family home, and then get to the garage itself. The way these plans are shaded, anything in this, this light color here shows an existing area. The blue area is the new footprint, and then we'll be showing any of the proposed outdoor decks in green. So we're starting a grade here, and looking at the basement level. It is a walkout condition to the, the sort of northern side of the home itself, through this, this, this area to the left here, to the northeastern side. So we're proposing really to, again, create just an unexcavated condition to the south of the existing home. Going up to the first floor, here, there again, just for orientation purposes. The street is to the, the bottom of the page here. You can see the extent of the existing home, which we're maintaining, it's, we're reconfiguring some of the footprint inside, but the extent of the footprint is remaining the same. We're adding this addition to the rear and the back, as we described, which will extend the living space to the first floor and create a mudroom. We're also proposing a, an outdoor deck that wraps around that new living space. When we get to the second floor, you'll see the footprint of this addition does step back, so that main area that we were just looking at is only at the first floor. And here, we're showing that we're just adding a bathroom to the second floor and a new deck off to the northeast facade, facing the, the city and the water views beyond. And then at the upper level, again, we're maintaining this, this, this main roof ridge line, and we're creating two full dormers to increase the living area up at this, this third floor. We're adding a new deck, and then we're enlarging that footprint slightly within the area of that new dormer here. So here you can look at it, just a roof plan that'll make sense when we look at the elevations in a moment. So if we're looking at the section, again, we're maintaining that existing roofline structure, we're shallowing out this dormer location to increase that living height. And you can see, I think, one thing that's important to note, so this home, the grade does slope fairly significantly from southwest to northeast across the property, and we have, again, that walkout condition at the basement. From this property to the abutment to the rear, it's about a six or seven foot grade change from the, the, our property to the next property up, that sits at the corner of Bayberry Road and Bellevue Road. And so, really what we're doing is maintaining sort of the existing relationship of this home to that, that abutting neighbor to the southwest of us. And the only real extension that we're creating above the existing roofline is this, this tower condition that you'll see in a second from our perspective views. That really is just bringing light into that new master bathroom. So here we'll look then, quickly at the garage structure that we're proposing. So, anything that you see here in, in this pink color, again, is the existing footprint, and then anything in blue is the proposed expanded area. We're maintaining one of the car bays, and we're converting, converting that second bay into a pool room living area with a kitchenette, a, a small bathroom, then a sitting area that opens out toward what will be a pool. There's then a stair that goes up to the second level, and we are increasing the height of the structure by about a foot and a half in order to create a loft space up above. We are proposing a, a green roof up above that new living space below. And this whole area and this entire site will be landscaped significantly, there will be green roofs. The homeowner here is an avid gardener, and also really wants to emphasize a sustainable approach to the work that they're proposing here. Durable materials, roof gardens, permeable paving at their driveway and around the pool area. Really just trying to take a responsible approach to developing the, the home further here. Then we're just looking at a quick roof plan of that garage, and a section of that garage, where, again, the street is to the left-hand side. And then the, the yard that sits between the garage and the house would be to the right here. Just some quick inspiration images, as we were looking at, sort of the flair that we were looking at and the design language. And here, so we're standing on Bayberry, Bayberry Road, looking really kind of southeast into the property. This is the existing home, as you can see with the new dormers off of that existing roofline. We're gonna be re-siding the house and introducing some new trim details to really help break down the visual scale of the home. We're also using some streamlined structural systems to really minimize the deck profiles as well, and keep this sort of clean and, and, and somewhat of a modern interpretation of New England coastal design language. And then to the left, you see the renovated garage with the loft space up on the second level, and then that bumped out area at the first floor with a new living. Here we're looking at the elevation of the home that would be sitting and facing the interior yard of the, of the property site. On the right-hand side of the slide, this is the street. And then on the southwest side, so we're looking at another elevation, this elevation faces our abutment to, to the side of our house. And then this is the elevation to the rear of the property. So you can see, just looking at this quickly, the, this area here is the area of the addition and that footprint. So we're really only creating that addition at that lower first floor. And any of the sort of build-out at the second floor is occurring really within the existing footprint of that home here. And that concludes just an overview of what we're proposing to do here, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah. My question's, can I get this back, please? Mike, can I get back? Sorry. That's fine, that's fine. First of all, I'm gonna stop the meeting. Clark Murphy is here, and Commissioner Duke is also here. The third floor, I mean... You know, I'm a favor of dormers, but maybe 50% of the width of your house at, at six, six-foot dormers somewhere? Not full two-thirds story dormers, also on top of your garage? You have a rental unit there, ready to go, once you're done, and I'm not in favor of anything like that, kitchenettes and baths and a garage, so... As far as I'm concerned, I don't have any questions, because, number one, I think it's too big, number two, the garage is a no-go from the beginning for me. I don't know how the other guys feel, I'll bring it up to my coach here, Mr. Kavais.
Well, I'm not happy with the, the garage at all, and I think, I think it's a very large building for the spot. And that tower, which is very nice-looking, is, is, I have a problem with that, too.
Alright, Mr. O'Brien, any comments before we get into this?
Same feelings, feels though the garage is being turned into a rental apartment, so, I'd be...
We know it's not, but when they leave, they got a rental there, the next people are gonna move in there.
In the future, it's, it's right there for that, so.
Mr. Hemel?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of the garage either, I don't like to see this in rez A, especially in a really nice rez A neighborhood. And I think some of the third floor might be excessive on the, on the main house.
Mr. Chin?
I, um, I'm not in favor of the tower, I think the tower is a little bit too imposing for the neighborhood, and for the, for the abutters. Obviously, I echo your sentiments on the garage, to get this expansion of the main house, you don't need to have another apartment on top of the garage necessarily.
Alright, yeah, and that's it. Well, I think the applicant, if you might chime in here, I, I think they're looking at something to shrink this house a little bit, maybe put a couple dormers up top on the third floor. Six footers, or whatever, in it... You know, you wanna put a loft up there with some chairs and all that, I, I don't see nothing wrong with that, but toilets and bathrooms and full kitchenettes, no. Yeah, I'm not allowed, I'm just saying. But we're gonna let the people speak, 'cause there is neighbors that might be chimed in here, and I still wanna hear what they have to say. 'Cause they're living behind you and beside you, maybe they're not online, I don't know. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone, raise your hand, star nine, chime in?
Mr. Chair, may I address some of the board's comments before we hear public testimony, or would you?
Sure, go ahead, I'll give you that.
So, just as, as far as the space at the garage is concerned, I, I just wanna be clear that, you know, the, the owner is, is planning to live here throughout the renovation process, and the intent of that space is specifically so the owner can be living at the property while the house is being renovated. Yep, so, you know, this is not intended to be used as a rental, it would not be used as a rental.
No, it doesn't, but tomorrow morning, let me tell you, between divorces, car accidents, horror shows happening, it happens every day. That house is sold in a year, who knows, six months, five years, we don't know. And you have a rental there waiting to go, or 10 years from now, he sells the house, they say that's been there 15 years, it's been used as that. These things people say, we just can't build them like that, so they can be used like that. So that, that, as far as I'm concerned, as a cheer for this, I ain't putting a second house on, on the same property, I'm just not. So my vote would be gone, and I, I can see from the others, it's probably, you only need one more to say no, it would never happen, so... You can light it up, do what you want, so that's gone, let's talk about the house.
And, and as far as the house is concerned, just from a scale standpoint, I, I just wanna, you know, point out, we, we certainly looked at this entire neighborhood and, and really evaluated some of the other redevelopments that have been done in this area.
It shouldn't have been done, I'll be right.
There have been, there are several projects that are far more impactful than what's being proposed on this site here. You know, we really attempted not to come in and put forward a, I'll call it a cram plan, where we're putting 20 pounds into a two-pound bag, so to speak. This is really intended to be a thoughtful and sort of minimal expansion of this house.
It's a beautiful home, I think you did an awesome job, it's a gorgeous home. It's just too big for that lot, you're going 13 foot from your lot line in the back of the house. I mean, you're coming right up to your neighbor, it's, it's just, it's too much for that lot. I mean, the board spoke, it's like, it's a gorgeous home, gorgeous. If you had a giant lot down there, and you had the room, and you did that, may, maybe you could fit down there. But that, I, that's not gonna fit there where that is, it's just impact, I think it's a big impact. You can put some third-floor dormers up there, make it look real nice, get their third floor up there what they want, but it won't be a full, full dormer, three floors all the way across. And I've seen some of the other ones, with the, with the little bump out, and they got their, they got their third floor, they're standing on the third floor looking out over the ocean, because that's what you wanna get, up over the ocean, I get it, I get, I get what's going on there. But you know, he bought that piece of property, and, and he's in his own A, and he wants to turn it into something that's not in zoning.
Well, I think in that regard, Mr. Chair, Herbert Whistle, the, the owner is actually here, and I, he, I think he'd like to speak to that, if, if that's okay with you.
That's fine, let him speak. Put him up. It's a gorgeous home, beautiful, how you doing?
Good, thanks, thanks for taking the time, too. I moved to, I rented this place, I've been here, I love the house, I'm never gonna sell it. I, I know you have concerns about, you know, me turning it out into a rental, that, anyone who knows me, there's no way I would ever do that, but I understand.
I'm not saying you're gonna, I'm not, we're not saying you're gonna.
I will never sell this property as long as I'm alive, I'll, I'll make that pledge now. But the main thing I wanna mention is, you guys just recently approved a house right to my corner here at 98 Bellevue. And it's a gigantic, I mean, it's probably, my house finished, it's gonna be under 3,000 square feet, that house is probably 5,000 square feet. It's, it's 10 feet higher than mine, and it's three stories. It's a full walkout basement, plus three stories with full dormer on the roof, and it looks like right down, like, I have no privacy now, that's why I'm changing it around. I'm moving my decks to the front, that's why I'm doing that addition on the side, 'cause they basically just stare down on my deck when I'm out there. The same thing for the property at 10 Wedgewood, which you just approved a year and a half ago, that's a two-family. You let them do a full dormer with decks, and they're only six feet from my property line. I'm 14 feet with, with the additions. Everyone on my street, on Bayberry Road, has said they have no problem, I've showed them the pictures, I don't, I don't know about, about.
It's a gorgeous home, it's gorgeous, it's gorgeous. It is, it's a beautiful home, what a design, fantastic, and you're gonna put a ton of money in it, I get it. But we can't be putting two families, two homes on a single lot, we just can't do it, that's what you're asking for, the garage is a second.
If I put no kitchenette in there, just a bathroom for the pool, is that, would that be acceptable?
But that's how it changes, once you put that in there, you can do anything you want, the inside, no one knows. So, you know what I mean, it's like, once you have a drain in there, once you got your drain in there.
How about no shower, just a toilet?
You know, you wanna loft area, you can put a loft area in there and have people do what they want in there, but you can't, you just can't. You can't stop putting, you want lights in there, and what you want, lights, that, maybe a water line, but no, you start putting toilets in there, that turns into a house, it turns into a house.
I find I work from home now more, and I want it that more as an office up there, not like anywhere for people to study.
Yeah, I, I couldn't do it, personally, I couldn't do that to a garage, no. I, I've never allowed it, and I never would. We have so many of them, that, that, that's how it started, and where I live in Quincy, there's probably 10 of them. Their garage is now a home, a complete home, that's deeded home, and they split the lots. Now they got 18, 20, 200 feet houses on, on a, on a, you know, 31, 100-foot lot. They crammed them all in, and they, and they turned them from garages to houses, and it happened in those years, over the years, for 30 years, and now, now what we got? Too much property down there, there's different families living in it, and it's just, you can't, I, I just could never do that, I couldn't.
Can I make it a little, little shorter up there, so at least I can get storage up there?
Yeah, you can put it up there and put some storage up there, wherever you want, I don't mind you doing that, just, just keep, keep, keep the drainage and, and, and the toilets and everything else out. You got your lighting, you can go in there, play pool, do what you want. You can bring over a, a thing with coolers and drinks, like everyone else does in the yard, you know? But as far as toilets and all that, and showers, and water, next thing you know, people change it to living, 'cause they got a big drain in there. Once the big drains in there, in the back of your garage, you have a drain coming out of there, drain, right, what is that?
Back of the garage, I'm not sure, Peter, do you know?
There's a, there's like a four-inch cleanout going out the back, I don't know what that's there for, is it a cleanout, is it?
Uh, I'm not, I'm unsure.
There's a drain pipe coming out the side of your foundation for the garage.
Could I put, could I put a no kitchenette and just a toilet, no shower?
I don't know what you're saying, a what?
No shower, like, in the garage, can I put no indoor shower, or anywhere to bathe, and no kitchenette? No, like, sink, no kitchenette or anything, could I, could I do that, just a little sink where the toilet is? Just 'cause people are gonna use the pool, it's just you have to go all the way inside. The main reason is just convenience, it's hard to like walk all the way around the house, every time someone has to go to the bathroom to go, to go up to the house.
But you know, once you, once you put it in there, and the doors are closed, you can do anything you want inside, and the next person can't.
Yeah, I'll sign a affidavit and writing that I want.
Doesn't matter what you sign, once, once you sell that house, the next guy closes, the doors are closed, the garage doors are closed, they can do, outfit it, you never know until it's too late. It's like, and then people, you know, the problem is, we had illegal apartments in Quincy and people died. Why? Because they let them do silly things, like putting in toilets in their garage, and this and that, next thing you know, they built them to units, they, they illegally did it. I'm not saying you're doing it, down the road, people do this, people get hurt, and all of a sudden, a lot of people, who, who okayed that? Who did this? I'm not gonna be the guy okayed two houses on one lot, I'm just not, personally, I'm out when it comes to a garage, and when it comes to, you know, outfit, just, I'm just out. You can build it what you want, you can put, you can put your loft area in there, you can put storage in there, put lighting in there, do all that, but that's all you're gonna get from me, that's...
Okay, okay, that's fair enough.
You can put kitchen cabinets up and store stuff, that's up to you, but you can't put a kitchenette in there.
Know what I probably can do, is I probably can just put the, a half-bath in the basement, 'cause it's walkout there? So, can you, like, just let me build the same shell that I have for storage in my office, but no bathroom, no shower, no kitchenette?
Well, I, I'd be in favor of that, yeah, if you wanted to put a little loft area up there, go up and work, sure. I don't, I don't see nothing wrong with that, I just don't want no pipes in there, drain pipes, sinks, then toilets go in, the next...
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough.
Wife sends you out there for the next four months, you don't want that. So, alright, let's, let's see where we're at with, if anyone here has any comments. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak?
Yes, this is Dave Locken, 82 Bellevue, I'm in the butter.
Yep, go ahead, Dave, where you live in 82, is that, that's on top?
Yeah, it's on the corner, uh, corner of Bellevue and Bayberry.
Are you right behind him?
No, across the street.
Across the street, okay.
My question is, how much higher is the garage gonna be? I just heard a foot and a half, but it appears a lot higher than that on the drawings.
No, what I have here is, it's, it's, it's not, it's, let me see, right? It's just a loft area that he wants to put up there.
I think it's 13 feet total, the garage?
Yeah, it is, it is only a foot and a half higher than the existing ridge line of the garage today.
Right. It's, uh, that's, that's not, that's not an impact, as long as there's no plumbing in there. Any other questions, Slackens?
No, that was it, it just seems, it looked like it was a lot higher than a foot and a half higher than that.
Well, when you get to that steeple up there, that big giant steeple, that's, that's, that's an impact on the neighborhood, too, you know?
I'm talking about the garage itself.
Yeah, I'm talking about the house, though, that's, that's another impact, when you get up above that, and you start putting a steeple up there. Okay, anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Slackens, anyone else like to speak?
Are there people speaking in favor, or are you opposed at this point?
People in favor, if they wanna speak in favor right now, 'cause I haven't got to the against, anyone wanna speak in favor, or have any questions at all right now? And then I'll go to the next one, we can find him in a minute. The only one up there is Rutterfeld, right there, Citizen Rutterfeld. Citizen Rutterfeld? There he is, right there, right to the screen, Citizen Rutterfeld, right up there. John? Yeah, John, you there? He just left, what up, there he is. John?
I, I put my hand down, because I'm totally against this project.
Okay, alright, alright.
We'll be back.
I'll get you in a minute, is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor? Have any questions? No? Second call, third call. All that closed, I got a letter here from the DPW. Chairman Aitkins, on board of appeal members, March 29, 2021, 11 Bayberry Road, case number ZBA 2084, reviewed. Submittal for the above-referenced project, that comments, we don't have any comments, there is no comments, anything further, please advise. Anyone opposed or undecided, Citizen Rutterfeld? John, you there?
Thank you.
You're up.
John Rutterfeld, 62 Grand Mall Road, I'm gonna tell the truth.
Mr. Kavais, could you give me a voice, please?
So, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not that I'm the truth, I hope you die?
I do.
Thank you.
You're up, John.
Yeah, basically, I was just looking at the side view of that when we were looking at the pictures. It kinda looks like it's a hotel, talking about putting a pool there, with the second dwelling unit being so close to the street, that's definitely like it's gonna be a second unit there, I mean, this is one of the biggest asks that I've ever seen, and it, you know, it doesn't compare to any of the other developments that I've seen, he's basically asking to do two different things. I could see asking for one thing would be a reasonable request, maybe, but for asking for both of these requests at the same time, I really don't understand where the applicant is coming from. And, you know, I'm gonna say, while I was sitting here watching this stuff, you know, I was looking up the, the applicant's LinkedIn webpage, and, you know, he's from a place called Citiescape International Real Estate. And one of the things that says he specializes in is income-producing multifamily buildings. So, I mean, this guy is into real estate, he's a real estate investor, he bought the property in 2017. A lot of the people you're talking about that maybe have done things are people that have lived in Quincy their whole lives, and are really people that are telling the truth, so...
Can I jump in, 'cause that's not back to the...
Hey, 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 hold up, hold up, hold up, this meeting ain't getting out of hand enough.
But he's saying, stop, that's not back to the...
John, you don't have, sir, you don't have the floor, please. We will call on you, and mute, mute, please, please mute everyone except for the board. John, you have the floor.
No, exactly, and, you know, I'm, Mr., I have trouble pronouncing your last name, but the applicant, you had ample time to speak, Chairman Aitkins let you speak. Chairman Akins let you speak more than I let anyone else speak before. He usually makes everyone shut up, so, um.
Whoa.
Thank you for at least making the applicant shut up and letting me continue to speak right now, Mr. Akins. You do run a good meeting.
Thank you.
But basically, um, you know, like I said, you cannot, you can only have one res, one dwelling unit in residential A. And a dwelling unit is someplace that has a bathroom and someplace that has a place where you can sleep. So, you wanna create two dwelling units. It actually, to me, looks like you wanna create a third dwelling unit in the back on the first floor, and it looks like you're creating a fourth dwelling unit and maybe even a fifth dwelling unit upstairs. So, you know, I'm one hundred percent against this. Like I said, I've seen hundreds, maybe a thousand projects so far. This is definitely one of the worst proposals I've ever seen. Thank you.
Mr. Roterfeldt, anyone else opposed or undecided? Give me, give me a flag up so I know. Star nine, wave your hand.
The race again.
Well, it's a star nine, you're star nine.
I don't know who's star nine is.
Are you on a phone or you're on video?
Oh, hello?
Yeah, all right, you're up. Bob?
Oh, yes. Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Good. Thanks, thanks for taking a minute. I just wanted to call and just say, uh, I'm a director butter and I, I took a look at the plans and I did support the project. And I, I do believe, uh, what he was just referring to was an office that he wanted to have over the garage. So, I, I, I don't feel like it's a multi-unit situation and I don't think it's gonna be a, a second family or somebody else there, but.
No, I don't either. I believe everything he says.
I just wanted to say I was totally in support of it. It looks, it looks beautiful to me.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hello?
Yep, who, who do we have here?
Lance Gillespie.
Lance, you're on.
Okay, uh.
Hold up, Lance, one minute. Uh, I'm sorry. Did you swear, man, please?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you die?
I do. Uh, my, my feelings about it, the garage is so close to the street now. I don't see any reason to do anything with it other than, uh, leave it the way it is, which it, it's, I don't like it the way it is even. As far as, I, I think the gentleman lives alone in that house. I can't see any reason for it to be as big as he's looking for it to be. Any of the setbacks that, uh, they're going, that they're asking for, I'm, I'm against. And the same thing, uh, with the garage, I, I don't think anything should be done with that.
Lance, what's your, Mr. Gillespie, what's your address?
Twenty-two. And the other thing that Mr. Atwistle said is that he brought, uh, drawings around to all the neighbors and everybody approved. I never saw a drawing. He never brought anything to me.
All right.
And if he was looking for a bathroom in the garage, he, he mentioned it himself, he could put that down in the basement. But the whole building to go, to go against any of our building rules, uh, I'm absolutely against.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, Dave Locken, back again.
Hold up, Dave, you got a second call. You're at the end. Anyone else wanna speak? Second, second call? Herb? Go ahead, let him, go ahead, Herb.
Um, just wanna clarify, I didn't say I talked to everybody on the street. I said I talked to the butters on the street. I didn't talk to people down, further down the street, one thing. Two, I don't, I, I'm a real estate broker. I, the other person stated that I own investment properties, incorrect. That's the only property I own. Um, I don't, again, I don't intend to sell this in my lifetime. I, I'm putting significant money into it that I'm probably not gonna gain back in resale value. It's not a, like, a smart move. I'm kinda building it just for my own use, so it's like my forever home. If I have a family at some point that I can live here and don't have to sell it. The house, I know everyone thinks it looks gigantic. It's, it's three thousand square feet. Um, as I said, the house that was just approved that abuts me in the corner, the white house, is probably over five thousand square feet. They just put a pool in that's three feet from my backyard. They put a retaining wall in of like six feet and a fence of five, so they have eleven foot wall behind me now. Um, so, I just wanted to clarify. And then I also conceded that I'm open to, on the garage, if it's like a big issue, to take the bathroom out of the garage, um, as we, as we spoke.
Let's be, let's be clear. That bathroom, as far as I'm concerned, and the board said, will never happen. So, we're not taking it out. It's never going in. Let's get straight.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I'm not fighting, I'm not fighting your recommendation is what I'm saying. So, I'm not, I'm not putting a, a fight for that. It's, it's intended to be an office. Um, there's no, you know, second hotel. It's gonna be four, it's gonna be a four-bedroom house, three of which, one's gonna be for like sports memorabilia and there'll be three bedrooms. And it's gonna be three bathrooms. It's not like this enormous house for this area, um.
Didn't say it was. I just said, the way it's built with, with those two, two dorms, full three stories, that isn't what I, what we call for. We call for, you can put dorms up, but you can't put full dorms the length of your house, because what that is, is transit to another three-story home. And, and the people that buy in is, buy so they know they're getting two. Want a dormer, you come back here and we'll give you a couple dormers. That's what we do. That's what this board's for. Help people increase a little more space in their home. Not to give them a third floor in a, in a two-and-a-half story residence. It's not there to the people that lived it. So, uh, that's my two cents. All right, thank you. Anyone else wanna space? If anyone else here wants to speak?
Dave Locken.
Last call?
Yep, Dave Locken.
Go ahead, Dave, you're up.
Um, I'm opposed to anything being done with a garage in a height situation.
Yeah, he's just, he's raising it by a foot and a half to put a loft in there and he's bringing down. So, when the stairs come up, you go up, you go up the stop and you get a half thing, a little loft area where people can go and I don't know, you got three or four people hanging out and talk or something. There's not gonna be no shower in there. There's not gonna be no bath in there. There's not gonna be any water in there. There'll be lights in there.
Is there any way we can bring that, uh, side view of the garage back up again, please?
Yeah, where do you live exactly?
Eighty-two Bellevue.
Eighty-two Bellevue, okay. So, it's, it's way below his house. I mean, it's in the back, down, it's down, way down.
No, it's not.
High privacy.
Oh, it is. It's, it's down low.
It's right in my sight, yeah, it's in my sight, Mark.
Yeah, because the house is back a few feet and that's almost on the corner lot. Go ahead, put it back up on as you can, the applicant. Isn't that okay, isn't that okay, Mike? How do you get any moves on, yeah?
Sure, I'm showing it right here, yeah.
What, what, what's the height of the existing structure? Wait a minute, wait a minute, guys. Let's get rid of all that stuff, yeah. There you go.
So, you can see right here. Yeah, so the existing structure is about, it's about fourteen feet to the ridge. And again, we're bringing this up to just about sixteen feet here to the ridge. So, it's not a significant increase in the height of the existing structure whatsoever.
So, it's three feet high, because it's thirteen, I think, now.
I think that's probably the existing, existing structure is probably ten and low.
Little dormer he's getting on there?
To get eight feet with.
We have, we.
No, he's cutting, oh, baby, let me see what he's got.
We have the existing height of the structure at four, at fourteen feet and it does change just because the street does fall as you go along the actual length of it. So, you're looking at an average measurement of the height, but also.
Sixteen feet, correct? I mean, having eight foot, eight foot, you would need that. So, how are you gonna cut this? Where's this loft inside? It's gonna be cut down? Is it gonna start halfway up?
I'll go back to the plan for the, yeah, garage. Yep, so here we're looking at the second floor. So, you can see here, it just tucked up into that roof scape, right? So, there's a dormer out to the back of the, back of the garage, which is what creates the space here. There's a dormer out to the front that creates a little tiny space and it's just meant to break down.
You're going up five stairs?
You, you're going, yeah, the stairs come up from, from below here, correct, to get up to it. So, it's, it's not a significant increase in the height.
Five, six, seven, eight, ten. It's eighty, that's seven and a quarter in stairs, right?
Uh, seven, seven, eight code maximum. These are slightly less than seven because we wanted to make it a little easier to navigate the stairs. But if, I'll go to a section of the garage, you can see here. So, here's the sixteen feet and you can see how that's aligned. You have eight foot floor to floor, all right? Then you have a seven foot clear at the second floor here for a portion of that space. And again, with this being a loft space and you have a bit of a knee wall here toward the, the rear of the property, call it. It's really, the roof of that is really tucked down over the existing garage to keep the height down as low as possible up here.
They only got seven foot ceiling up there.
That's right. It's a very, very shallow space, exactly.
I'll tell you, the exist, existing structure, by the way I'm looking at it right now, is probably closer to twelve feet. Well, I mean, he's got his plans there and he drew them, so this stamp.
I think that has to be verified.
Seven feet, all right, all right. I heard your comment. Could you please take off the comments? We can't have people, uh, jumping in the middle of the meeting. Well, it's a seven foot ceiling, you got eight foot bottom, that's fifteen, and then you got a foot between is sixteen.
Eight foot bottom, one foot.
That's nine, and then a seven foot is sixteen.
Sixteen, and then another foot.
Another foot at least.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, right.
No, it's, it is, it is sixteen. Again, it's eight foot from the first floor to that second level, which is the, the floor of that loft space, and then it's eight feet from the floor of that loft space to the top of the roof.
All right, so you got seven foot ceiling.
Does that average grade?
Um, it's so close, it's like, because where that part of the land is, it's like.
And these are, yeah, again, these are actual heights that we're discussing. The average grade is calculated as one hundred, one point one eight feet here on this site, where the floor of this garage is actually, uh, is actually down at ninety-eight feet. So, I just wanna be clear that we are talking about actual, uh, maximum heights here rather than trying to play with heights in that regard.
All right, all right. Last call. Does anyone wanna speak in this project? We can be there, right? Except for the board. Anyone wanna speak? Raise your hand, give me a star nine. No? All right, call that part of the meeting over. Gentlemen, discussion time. I don't mind the garage going up a couple feet to have a little loft in there because he's gonna make, make a little loft area, you know? People may be hanging by the pool. You don't want them in the house. They're a little wet, pop in the loft area and hang out. And, uh, to me, that's not a, it's like a storage space anyway. He's not gonna be able to have people over there to go to the restroom and stuff because there is gonna be none. So, but the house, I got a problem with myself.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I recommend that they come back with a new set of plans because?
Well, that's what I wanna make sure we're all in favor.
We're all, you know, we're all talking numbers and it's not clear to me exactly what conclusion we've come to. It's so, I, I know, but I'm not in favor of the project as it is. I, I won't mind giving them a chance to sort of make it look not so big, fix the dormers on the top floor. I mean, we're giving them a three-story building and it's not, it's a residence A.
Right. And then, and I feel the same way. And I was gonna finish, I was gonna say, listen, I don't know what we're doing with the garage. Uh, and I wanna feel first, are we gonna send them back to do the garage over or not do it? I don't think personally, the garage is no big deal with a little loft area if you're gonna have a pool and an open walkout down there and then they can go back upstairs, to me.
I, I would like to see a plan where all of the pipings and all the plumbing is not there. So, I wanted it to be on the record clear that this is, that what we're talking about, it's actually gonna happen.
Right. And, and that's, that's what we got to. There's not, not gonna be no plumbing in there. It's not, he can have electrical, he can have his lighting, do what he wants. But he can't have any, any, uh, drains, toilets, showers, anything. Uh, but the house, are we talking dormers up there? If he wants to put two dormers up there instead of full-length dormers all the way across? Is that what you're looking at? To give him some dormers? I think, you know, you get a couple dormers, interrupt the roofs, kinda gives him more space up there. There's a lot of things you can do when you get dormers. You can put, you know, you can put your bureau there where between the dormers and your beds in the back and all that stuff, but not a full third floor, no. I don't know. What you, you're speaking, your turn.
No, I, I, I would be okay with smaller dormers. I don't, right now, I think it's a three-story house. Although you propose a three-story house, it's a tower on it.
Right. And what about that tower? You in favor of that at all?
I'm not loving it.
No, I'm not either. Okay, Mr. O'Brien, you're up.
Uh, same circumstances. The tower has to go and the, uh, garage should just be for either storage or a place to, um, like you said earlier, put a pool table.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, there's, and, and the dormers, uh, have to be dormers, not a, not a complete third floor there.
Six foot dorms.
Right.
All right.
Like we do everywhere else in residence A. Not, not something, uh, too restrictive, but just whatever we, whatever we come up with generally in residence A.
Yeah.
Uh, our history, I'd like to stick with our history so that we're, we're consistent.
Right, and we usually say like fifty percent of the length of the house could be done. So, if you get a thirty foot, you could put fifteen feet of dorms, three five-foot dormers for, for, you know, aesthetics too. Uh, you know, two six footers, but something close to that, right?
Right, because he's holding, he's holding on height. It's still, it's still meets zoning, so.
Right, right, right. And less than fifty percent of the roof stand on dorms. Okay, uh, Mr. Chin?
I think that the tower has to go and, um, I would like to, I would like to confirm what that, what the restrictions are gonna be on the garage.
Yeah.
Because the, the plans right now are totally different than what we're talking about tonight.
Right, they'll come in back with new plans. I'm just trying to figure out what we're gonna make. Just electrical only in the garage, correct?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, just electrical. And tower gone, okay. Uh, is that it? Mr. Chin? Thank you. And Mr. Himmel?
Right, the tower's gotta go, the full-size dormers have to go. And everything that would make that an apartment in that garage has to go, even, even a galley kitchen's gotta go.
Yeah, he's not gonna have any, anything there at all, just strictly lighting. All right, all right, thank you. For the applicant, please, can put him up, Peter? Peter, you there?
Yep, I was just waiting to be unmuted. Um, we, we, we hear you. I think, you know, certainly the existing third floor is, is already a walk-up with an existing deck. And I think, you know, we, we understand and respect the board's input, yeah, here tonight. Uh, we, we certainly will go back, we'll take a look at the, the plans here, take the board's feedback into account. Um, I know Herb is anxious. He's been, you know, waited to get this project going for a while and so we'll, uh, work on, on, on looking at this quickly and, and, you know, come back with a, a series of, of, of changes to the project that hopefully, uh, meets the board's need. And I think also at the same time, you know, uh, we do wanna recognize that, I mean, directly behind this house, uh, if you look at the form and extent of the building that was approved on, on Wedgewood Street compared to what we're proposing here, I mean, it's oranges and apples in terms of impacts. So, I think we're, you know, we'll be back and, and, and we have certainly clear direction from the board and, and appreciate your time and comments to this.
Okay, how much time do you need?
Um, let us talk about how much time we need. When?
Muted.
You, you could, you can, uh, you can come back in May, four weeks, six weeks. What do you need?
I, I think we could be prepared to come back in the four weeks.
All right, when is that, when is that made?
Five-eleven or five-twenty-five?
Five-twenty-five. Five-twenty-five, twenty-one. I think that's a chairman night, right? All right, we'll, we'll, uh, thank you, Peter. Mr. Convers, could I have a motion to bring this back five-twenty-five when we set a plan?
Absolutely. This is Chairman Matt number twenty-dash-eighty-four, Herbert Atwistle, for a variance to renovate and expand a single-family home and construct a loft area with kitchenette and baths, attached garage at the premises number eleven, Bayberry, sorry, excuse me, Road, make a motion to.
will play Bayberry, sorry, excuse me, wrote, make a motion to continue the hearing until May 25th.
Second, uh, Madam Clark, can we? Madam Clark, can we take a vote?
You can, Mike Cavaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Agans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Tonight, I want to get something out of the way here. It's going to take a quick minute before we even do this. Uh, Hancock Street, is the applicant here? Applicant for Hancock Street? Who is it? Raise your hand. Yeah, there you go. Mr. Goldberg, unmute him.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goldberg, before we go on even tonight, you going in front of planning?
Um, that's after this.
Yeah, well, we want it before this, because your building is from end to end with zero parking and you're going to get that from the, uh, planning board? And we're not going to prove nothing until I see what the planning board said and did their stuff and come back. That's the way we'd like to see it done, yeah.
Um, I mean, if that's, that's your preference and that's what we're going to do.
Okay, uh, when's your meeting with them?
That I don't have information on. Um, I'd have to get back to you on that.
All right, uh.
I mean, if I can continue this, um, and, and to be frank with you, we were advised to come here first by the planning board.
Well, I'm looking at what I'm looking with, and I don't think the board's, they, what, what we've seen here in plans, going from lot line to lot line, I don't even, where, where's, where's the help? Mr. Mr. Duka?
Uh, he can need about two months just to get on.
You're not even on there yet?
No, because we were advised to come to you first by the planning board.
Right. So when you go there, I can get you in here within two weeks. We can, we can bring you right in. Once you go, once you get your date with planning, call Noreen and we'll give you that date. How's that, Madam Clark?
Get a date cert.
Because we don't have a.
I mean, I'll just give a date. I'll give a date now. We'll just give a date two months from now. And if we got to move the date, we'll move the date. That way they won't have to advertise it. Yes.
What happens when the planning board says that we have to come to you first, like they did before?
Why is that going to happen? It shouldn't ever happen anyway.
That's what happened in the first place. That's why we're here.
Yes, yes.
When, Commissioner? Commissioner Duka?
So. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your brief summary, you suggested that you're going to planning board to get relief for parking?
Yes.
So regardless of what happens here tonight, you still need relief for parking from the planning board. So therefore you have to go to planning board. And we're suggesting, and I, I don't know who told you you had to come here first, but irregardless, you'll still be only two weeks away from coming back here. And you have to go to planning anyway. Um, so we'd like to see planning has the ability to, um, renew, make the project, uh, where store removal is going, parking, and they make recommendations, uh, which this board, uh, will consider, uh, those recommendations from the planning board. So my suggestion is to ask for continuance for six weeks. That way there, we don't have to readvertise, um, and then we can have a date certain. And if you're not ready by then, we can always move it another two weeks. You'll never be more than two weeks away.
Sure. Would you be willing to open the meeting for that continuance then?
Well, I'm gonna, we're going to do it right now. You're going to ask for continuance. And then what I'm going to do is ask the board if we can move it to that date and see what their vote is. June eighth work? See if you can get in there.
Uh, that works for me. Uh, the only other thing is when you open the meeting, is there a way that I can get a sense from the ZBA? Uh, you know, anything else that I need to address with the planning board?
Whatever the, whatever the planning board gives you for instructions, then you come to us. And we'll look at that. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we do take their recommendations. Sometimes we make a little change.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, it's, it's a lot of things. There's aesthetics of the building, there's this and that, that we might want that they don't say. We might want something different that, you know, it's on Hancock Street, let's make this a nice-looking building instead of using quick vinyl and all. I want to use something better, hottie wood, whatever. Make, make a look there.
Usually, usually make that part of our decision as well.
Right, that's part of our decision, what we decide. So you get your recommendations from them. We'll look at those. We'll take them over. And then the board will decide what they want to do, uh, with your building. Okay, June eighth. Is that okay with everyone on the board?
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Uh, Mr. Cavaes, could I have a motion for June eighth, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. About a ZBA matter, 21-11, 10 seconds mask LLC for a variance finding to construct addition to the existing fire-damaged commercial space for restaurant use on the premises number 429 Hancock Street. I make a motion to, uh, to extend the hearing to, uh, June eighth.
Second it? Second, Madam Clark?
Um, Mike Cavaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Sure.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Agans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, further under tonight's new business. Jin Zhang for finding to remove the existing front railings and replace it with enclosed windows, make a sunscreen, sunroom out of, uh, porch, number 183 Marlborough Street. The applicant, representative here. Someone give me a wave. Who's there?
Marty, you were going to bring Jeff in on this one.
Yeah, all right, Jeff's in. You're right. Jeff's in. I'm sorry, you said Himmel, you're out.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff's in, there you go.
I'm here.
Where's the applicant? Who's the applicant? Someone give me a wave or a?
The petitioner is Jin Zhang.
Yeah, I know it is.
Jin, are you there?
No. Anyone further down? Are we missing anyone on that list? Or is that exactly it?
That's everybody.
And there's no odd number, huh?
Very unusual.
Yeah, it is. Someone's got a, the pro house, they want to make a sun, sunroom out of Marlborough Street. They want to make a sunroom out of their porch and taking out the railings, just putting in windows. It's Jin Zhang. Jin Zhang? Anyone here that's representing Jin Zhang?
Jin Zhang is the representative, but I don't know if he's not on. He's usually very good about that.
Nice.
Jin, J-I-N-G. Last time, V-E-N-G.
Yep, you can always, I just move it to it. We'll get him a call.
Yeah, I don't know what, that's easier for him.
I know. Is there anyone here? Maybe something happened.
Computer, the internet, right, computer burnt, fried.
He's trying to get in. All right, anyone? No. Click on, click on, click on some of those. There's, there's one, the Z over there. Click on that. Yeah, add, add group two to that. Well, let's see who it is. Hello? All right. All right, so, all right, gentlemen, no one's there. Let's make a motion to move this, Mr. Cavaes, for two weeks. Bring it back. You got a fried computer or something. That'd be, uh, 21-4.
Star nine again.
ZBA 21-4?
Same, so.
Second one?
The star nine.
Right?
Yeah, maybe.
Star nine, anyone? Not, no one here? Nope? All right, uh, 21-4. Make a motion for, uh, 27?
This is Chairman, matter number ZBA 21-4. Jin Zhang for refining to remove the existing front railings to replace with enclosed window porch sunroom on the premises number 183 Marlborough Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing to, uh, April 27th.
Second it?
All right, Jeff.
Second.
Hey. Madam Clark, can I have a vote? Glad you're here, Jeff.
Mike Cavaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes, ma'am.
Martin Agans?
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'm a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Home fama?
Hi.
Posed. Thank you for everything. Thanks, guys.